All right, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order here. It's April 4th, 2022, and we'll start with roll call.
Crainer.
Present.
McConnell.
Present.
Fortune.
Here.
Buska?
Yes.
Carman.
Present.
Next is the consent agenda. And included in the consent agenda is the approval of the agenda, approval of claims, approval of minutes from March 21st, 2022. Approval of minutes from March 21st, 2022 Capital Improvement Plan Work Session. It includes approval of Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales to the Howard County Agricultural Society, doing business at the mighty Howard County Fair, Howard County Expo Center with a change of map and licensed premises. And it also includes number six, the approval of application for tax abatement under urban revitalization plan for Adrian Samick.
So moved. Chaka.
Jan and Amy?
Carman.
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Crainer?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Next is staff reports. We'll start with public works.
The street guys burned the pile out at the yard waste site again today. I feel like this is going really well, and I feel like it's the most cost effective for the city. CIT will be here to start their contracted cleaning and televising for us next month. They're going to be doing the area west of Third Street West from 12th Avenue to 10th Avenue Southwest, so it'll be all, everything west of Third Street West. I just wanted to bring it up now to get the word out there, but we will be sending out a flyer as the time gets closer. And the first yard waste pickup will be in two weeks from today on April 18th, with the next days being May 2nd and 16th. And then, just one more thing, I had brought up to you guys about Andy Ludicating in that lot out there in Webster's. I just wanted to make sure that everybody has had a chance to look at that, or if we want him to come to a meeting and discuss what he's looking for. I know he's, he'll be reaching out again to see which way we want to go. So.
He's along.
Out in Webster's there.
That's what we talked about, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is police, and I believe Tim is not here tonight.
He's not, but he left me a message. So, there is the March report for the police calls. He just wanted to report that we have not heard back from our attorney yet on that dog issue that we talked about. So, we're going to give it a few more days. He also received a letter requesting that a four-way stop be put in at the intersection of Fifth Avenue East and Second Street East after this person had a car accident there. He said that most of our accident calls occur at controlled intersections with signs. So, he said to let the council decide what you want to do about this uncontrolled intersection.
And that was Fifth Avenue East and Second?
Fifth Avenue East and Second Street East. So, I don't know if you want to look at that, and maybe we'll put it on the agenda for next time. Gatlin Keener will be moving from reserve officer to a full-time officer officially on April 18th, 2022. He's passed all of his testing and has accepted our full-time offer. Officers have been busy with training, CPR, AED, first aid, bloodborne pathogens and hazard mitigation. Officers have finished Eddie Eagle at Notre Dame School and will be doing classes at Kessel this month. Officers have been making their presence known at Crestwood, eating lunch there and having recess with the kids.
Next is administration updates.
Housing rehab, they had the open house on March 25th for contractors to come and look at the two houses. Bids are due April 11th, so we're hoping we get some bids on that. Cresco Food Technology, they will be here on April 18th at our council meeting to talk about their renewal of their industrial agreement. We advertised in the shopper this week, and I'll probably put in TPD next week for board positions that are open. So, all of the boards will have at least one that expires on July 1st. We've placed ads for Teresa's replacement after she resigned as deputy clerk. So, ads have been placed, and we're starting to receive some applications for that. We met with metering technology. Our water meters were put in in 2008. Between probably 2008 and 2012, we replaced all of our meters. So, we currently drive around town, and our computer picks up the readings off of the meters. The problem is that they are no longer making those type of meters anymore, and our software is no longer supported, and we have to have an old computer to download the readings right now. So, if something happens, we're not going to be able to replace that. So, we have to upgrade the new, the meters. And so, we basically have two options. We can either have a set receiver, like on a pole, or probably on one of our water towers, kind of like what Black Hills does now, but, so there's a receiver up there, and then we have to go in and put in the new meters in each of the houses. And then, they would go by radio read up to this tower, and then that would transmit back to our system, and then we'd have live readings on everybody's meters. So, once the batteries start dying in the meters that we have, which they say between 15 and 25-year life, so we're already getting up to about 10 years, 10 to 12 years right now on the meters that are in, they're going to start dying, and so we're going to have to start replacing them. So, to make a long story short, but we did order one tower, $7,500 each. We're going to put it on the small water tower to start with, and also ordered some meters because we're out of our old meters, so we need to be installing these new style. So, we're going to put them in, and we're going to start installing them, and then hopefully, we could pick up the whole town with just the one tower. They think we'll probably need to put another tower up, possibly on the other water tower. But there is, those cost $7,500 each, and of course, like everything else, there's a big delay in the supply chain. So, we put in orders for meters and the tower, so they'll be coming here soon, but that was actually all budgeted in last fiscal year, and we've been limping along as long as we could, so it didn't happen last year, so if, we'll probably have to do a budget amendment for the, for this year.
Sorry? How much were they again? The meter?
106.
Something like that. And when she says the meter, she's not talking about them. We're just talking about the tops of the meter. The recorder and the transmitter are what goes bad. The battery's obviously for the transmitter, which goes bad.
That's what we have to go and replace.
Correct. Yeah. So, if we had to do the bottoms, it would be a much more expensive project.
But yes, we think our bottoms are working quite well right now, so we'd just be replacing the top. And when the batteries die, basically, all that happens is then it won't transmit to our readings. It'll still track how many gallons they're using, so when we start having a whole bunch of them dying, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to go in and get them replaced, but we still could go in and physically read them to see how many gallons everybody's been using, so.
And how long will this one last, once you replace it?
They say 20 years.
Again, they say 20 years. That's kind of there.
So, what do we really think, 15?
Yeah, they, they say 20, but they can't guarantee anything over 20.
So, once you put these in, in their real-time readings, will I be able to, like, get an app?
So, what oftentimes, yeah, they have the city charge, like, a small fee, and then if the people want to pay the city for that subscription, then we could open it up so that you would be able to see it. So, we see it in a lot of big industries or something like that that use a lot of water. They'd be able to track their usage live, so that, that will be, but there's extra stuff we have to do, so that's why we'd probably want to charge a fee, a small fee for it for people that want to do it.
I mean, because, like, if you didn't want to shut the water off for some reason, if you're gone for a while, that would be very useful. Okay, thanks.
And the nice thing, too, this is going to read in, so then, we're going to get warnings for high usage, like if they have three days of really high usage from their normal, then we're going to get a notice. So, hopefully, we could catch some of these leaks before they get to be a $1,500 bill for people, so it'll be an advantage. It's just, it's going to be a lot of work.
Is it thought to spread this out over several years, this implementation of this? I mean, is this something that's going to all go bad?
I think, I think it's going to be slowly doing it.
That's what I would say as well.
And right now, we just can't get these anymore, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And every town, every town that's got that is facing the same problem?
I'm assuming so, yes. I know Khan right now is going through a big upgrade where they're replacing everything, so.
How many meters in town?
1,900, I believe.
Or write up until your software nails.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that? Anything else from administration?
That's enough.
Any, any committee updates? Nobody? Okay. Next, we have comments from the audience, and this is a portion of the agenda is for comments that are not related to one of the items listed on the agenda. Comments can only be received, no formal action by the council can be taken. Those making public comments, we ask that you come up to the podium and state your name and address and speak from the podium, so. Let me check that mic, sorry. Is that mic on?
I need this.
Jeff Wilson, owner of Wilson Tree, Cresco, Iowa. Just a couple of concerns that came to my attention, that I was in and spoke to Nate about one of them already, and we were getting a lot of calls this spring about the city going around trimming the boulevard trees for heights for the clearance and for the sidewalks. I discussed this with Nate. It was executed pretty poorly, and just some not correct way of cutting was done, leaving stubs, leaving poor cuts, undercut, or cuts with no undercut, ripping of the limbs. Had several homeowners call and ask us if we'd come out and correct it. We did. I came in and talked to Nate about it, and he said that it hadn't been addressed already with the guys. But that's something that, if they're not educated in doing this, we can't be letting them do it. Point blank, we have professionals in town that do that for a living, and it's, it's just, it's proper, and for tree maintenance and for the future of the trees, it's the right way to do it. The second thing is, you guys recently voted on a stump contract that you led. It's a very small contract. It's not going to affect my business in any way. We bid on it every year. It's a $2,000 contract roughly per year, and it, you know, we bid on it religiously every year. We're the only full-time tree for servicing Cresco that bids on this. We've been alone bidding on it for several different years because other people hadn't bid on it, and this year, we tied with another company. And nobody bid on it last year, but they tied us this year. This has happened in other cities. It's happened in Charles City before where we've tied with another company. And in that case, they always gave it to the company that had it the year before if there was no problems. In this case, it was given to the other person that bid on this. I have no problem with it if it was a fair bid process and they're a continuous bid, but they didn't bid the year before. And the reason that I was told is because they didn't get it last year, let's give it to them. Well, they did not bid the prior year. So, and we did, and we kept the same bid. We didn't change our bid. So, it's, it's a minor thing, and that contract isn't going to make or break my company by any means, but I do have eight full-time employees in Cresco, and we work here full-time doing that. And these other companies that bid on it are part-time, they don't need it as an income, and we don't depend on it as an income, but it is nice to let some of my employees work in town once in a while, because we're always on the road. We work for 10 or 12 different cities, and we've been on all of their projects, and it, like I said, it wasn't unfair, it was just the justification of giving it to a person that didn't get it the year before, they did not bid the year before. So, just in the future, plus, on that token, we don't get to bid on the trees here. It's the only city within 100 miles that we don't bid on the trees. The trees are given to the same individual with no bid process. So, that's something that needs to be addressed. We would like to bid on your trees. So, with that, I'll back off, but it, it's just something that I think should be properly looked at, and, you know, if we're going to be competitive in a $2,000 contract, let's be competitive in the other one, too. Thank you.
Do you want to come up? Yep. If you can come on up and tell us your name and address and...
Hi, I'm Deana Betlaine, 713 Forte Avenue. I had, I, I did not receive any notice in my water bill about the new garbage, so I just learned of it last week. I don't know when you sent them out, but I learned of it last week from my niece, and her husband showed up. I had a lot of questions. I called the city hall, they didn't have many answers.
We're going to be talking about it later on in the, in the, on the agenda.
Are you?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yep. Actually, it's number, it's number 15. We're going to talk about, pretty much clarify everything, that hopefully, all the questions that we have and stuff, so.
Okay. Yeah, because I had called Hawkeye, and they didn't know anything either.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to, we'll talk about, we should have most of the answers. I don't know if anybody from Hawkeye is showing up, they're going to try, so. But it's a little bit later on, so they have time to get here yet.
Okay. Okay.
Is that fair? Yep. Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything under comments of the, for the part of the council meeting? Okay. We'll move on to, under the normal business, number one, Josh Dank from Clap Saddle and Gardener Associates to present bids and recommendations for the runway drainage improvement project.
Joshua Dank with the Gardener Associates. Been looking at this project and managing it from the start, last, last winter, basically. We got two bids in the other day, on 31st, one from Neymer Tile, and then one from Skyline. Looking at the, at the bids, I believe the bid tab is included in the council packets. We, we have the base bid for Neymer at 99, 245, and then base bid for Skyline at 102.7, and at this time, we're just recommending that the base bid be included in the contract, and that's what I would recommend, is execute just the base bid with Neymer Tile, and everything else seem to line up, and bid submission, so.
And the bids came in a little higher than we expected, I believe?
Yeah. So, base bid, I put in 65,400, and some of the big things that were different in here. While formulating the project, I reached out to some of the tiling companies in the area, and asked them what their prices were for something like this, this big item of 1,600 square, 1,600 feet of plowed-in tile. And I, I used the number that they gave me, on the high end of the range that they gave me, and it came out significantly higher, so. In addition to this, this base bid, we're already talking about some value engineering things, and have a number in mind for a change order, just to start off with changing the size of the tile, and do seeing cleanouts, and you can see on here, the cleanouts are $1,000 each, so that would go a long ways, removing five of those, I believe. So, the process would be to execute the contract as bid, and then we'll keep going on processing the change order later, after that.
Yeah. Any questions on that part? Right now? Should Mr. Crainer be voting on anything involved with this?
He is not a owner, so there's no current interest.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll move on to number two then. Yep, thank you, sorry. We'll move on to number two, the public hearing on the proposed plan specifications form of contract, an estimate of set improvements for the airport runway drainage improvement project.
And I did not receive any written or oral comments before.
If not, we'll close the public hearing. And then, number three, resolution-making award for contract for the airport runway drainage improvement project.
So, I would move the legal with Neymer Tile.
Wait a second.
Jan and Rich? Any other questions or comments from anybody?
Fortune?
Yes.
Crainer?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.
Sorry. All right. Number four, Josh Dank to discuss the possible future airport projects and grant application. Welcome back.
Yeah, well, I'll keep this little presentation short as well. I know that the funding with this airport being not included in the federal system is slower because it's a higher local match for state-funded grant applications. And I guess there's just one big thing to address here, is the runway is in pretty bad shape. It's in a poor condition. I have just a few papers from the last pavement condition index evaluation, so the state DOT goes around, they have people go, go through, make reports on how the pavement looks throughout the airport, and this is just, I guess, can I raise this up and show everybody? The runway's yellow in this, in case anyone can't quite see it, but that is not a good, good color for it to be there, so pavement condition index is a 0 to 100 number, and it's at a 45 right now. The way that the company that does their PCI is, is, the abbreviation for that, does the PCI numbers classification, 41 to 55 is a major rehabilitation, so the runway's in that major rehab condition right now. It won't be too many years before it starts to become borderline usable. We can continue doing some small patches out there, like have been for many years. It's just, it's about to drop down into more of a reconstruction level of conditions out there. So, one thing that I previously mentioned to airport manager, maybe the airport commission, briefly talked to Michelle about as well, just looking at doing a larger project out there for rehab and doing an overlay. It would need some concrete work done before that, just for the overlay to adhere better and not fail in a short period of time. So, one of the projects that I would recommend future consideration for is a concrete rehab out there, similar to what was submitted for last year in the state grants, so about $150,000 project to take care of the worst spots up there. That would initially raise your PCI a little bit, buy you a little bit more time, as well as prep it for an overlap project. Now, the overlay project would be probably about $500,000. So, that is a 15% match on that grant for local money. I, I've been giving a range of 450 to 480, but just to be safe, you know, a $500,000 project, we'll call that.
And that's an overlayment of what?
Of the runway.
Yep, but I mean asphalt.
Two inches of asphalt.
Yep. Two inches. Okay.
So, it's a thinner overlay, it's just something that, you know, move towards keeping the airport open and give you something that's a little cheaper to upkeep than, than the concrete. You might be doing it more often, and you could have a more in-depth life cycle analysis done to see, you know, what, what will keep, keep the runway open. And I know you have AirLab here, that's, that's moving in there, setting up shop to do some spraying around here. Don't know all of the effects that they'll have, if they'll be using, using that space a lot, and spending any money in town, that sort of thing. That's one of the goals of that.
Right.
But at some point, even, even their plans, they, they might not want to use them again, so. Those were kind of the pavement rehab projects to keep in mind. The rest of the pavement is in pretty good shape, except for some spots by the hangers, the, the oldest hangers there. It's down into the 20s for pavement condition index. It's still a usable pavement, and not as critical as the runway either. So, if, if there are constant lighting issues out there, I just have two more quick things, and I'll, I'll let everybody keep looking. This was just recently brought up and talked about, but if there are constant lighting issues out there with animals chewing through wires, getting electrician out there all the time, you know, there, there could be some conduit potentially added out there through that project that's going to be out there right now, if the grant funding allows that, but otherwise, if there was ever a need for a whole lighting rehabilitation, which I'm not saying that it's critical to have out there right now, that's probably about a $300,000 project, which could be state-funded again, and probably at that 15% or 20% local match. The one last project that could be considered is a hanger. So, T-hangers or a couple of box hangers, just to give you an idea on that price, that's probably like a $500,000 project for a four-unit T-hanger. And the way that the state grants work, you could apply for a grant for the building, as well as a grant for the site works or the pavings and grading, if you need any of that sort of thing. And right now, vertical infrastructure grants this year were increased to 300,000. That would require, again, the 15% local match, but they used to be capped at 150. That could be because of the infrastructure money that's flowing to all the airports right now, and to the state agencies as well. So, that could be there just this year, it could be there for a few years or permanently. And if that was the case, that would be one possible way to increase the base aircraft there, which does get the state's attention more, as well as increases hanger rental fees out there. And a little bit of a couple of meaningless, people probably ask every once in a while about it, so. What kind of questions do we have?
So, you mentioned $150,000 to take care of the worst spots, and then $500,000 to do the overlay. Can you do the $500,000 without the 150, or is that really a $650,000 project?
It's really a $650,000 project. She was done at the same time, it would lower the cost a little bit, less, you know, mobilization, that sort of thing. But for the, the rehab of, of the runway to get it to a much better state, yeah, it's about that. So, in that pavement condition index report that I printed off, I've got a page here that lists the maintenance required at 1.8 million. So, that's getting to reconstruction level, which is... So that's getting to reconstruction level, which is what they're saying. So you could easily spend the 1.8 out there.
That's like a whole new runway?
A reconstruction would actually be about four.
A new runway.
Oh, well, that makes 650 sound really cheap.
So you said there is grant money for the runway rehab?
So I talked with the person who controls money, and none of this is, of course, any sort of guarantee or thing by the state. You know, I just asked him, for this airport in particular, is that something that would be considered? An overlay project? And he said, it could be state-funded. It could very well depend on what other grants have received, grant applications have received in the air for the aviation. But looking back through their history, I look back at who else has gotten overlays and kind of compared to runway size that's sort of been in total cost. I mean, there have been some grants not as large as what I would say would probably be needed out there, the 600,000 total. But the people polled on $350,000 projects before to do an overlay. So it is something the state has funded before, at that 15% level.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I guess the last thing to consider, I know that you're going through the CIP for this next year right now. I don't know if that $150,000 project made the list or not, but it's just something to consider, continually applying for some work out there, even if it's not a large project, just to continually try to work on that PCI and keep it out of needing major reconstruction. Or it could weigh in on the state's desire to fund anything out there if it does drop into that.
This $150,000 that you're talking about, going in and shoring up some of them, is that something that the state has come in and said that this is the amount? Or is this the amount you guys come up with based off experience, or?
That was just an amount that we had come up with based on walking the runway out there, getting some pictures, doing a count of what was needed out there. That in itself was a year ago, using the same number from last year's grant application. So it could be different, we might be able to take care of it a little bit with this project that's going out there right now. Let's see how it looks.
That repair, now you talk about going in and is that actually cutting that concrete out and putting a new rock subbase in and then overlay that with asphalt? Bring it up level, or?
Any of the concrete patching would be a full depth cut, recompacting the subbase if it's in need of that, just making sure that there's enough there and that sort of thing. And then pouring concrete back, doing some dowels. It wouldn't be partial depth patching, it wouldn't necessarily go all the way through, replace the subbase and the concrete there. It's just pre-standard, cut and replace. And then that would be something in like a $150,000 project, and then overlay project.
Okay.
Did you say the range was for the PCI?
Well, out there right now, they have just the runway as 45. And if you're asking about how they classify it, 41 to 55 is major rehabilitation. And then reconstruction is pretty much anything under 40. And that's not saying that it's required if it hits that number. That's just how they classify it.
How does our runway compare to the ones, other ones around here you've seen?
I haven't been on the core as much. When I go, one of them that I've worked at pretty extensively is Charles City. They're a large airport, they do charter services, et cetera. Theirs was built in 2004, and it's in very great condition right now. They have, and one key thing was just good soil all around, but also really good drainage. But theirs is in great condition. Another one I can speak to around here, well, I guess, south and east quite a bit, but as close as I can think of, is Vinton. And they're talking reconstruction right now, they just added that. They are federally funded, so they can get more money for that. But they just did a $400,000 rehab project out there, just concrete patching, and it hardly made a dent in what they needed. So theirs is not in great shape. The concrete, when you look at it out of the airport right now, in the field of the panels, all looks okay. It's really the joints and the intersections of the joints that are in pretty bad shape.
Okay.
Josh, I got a question. You were stating that in the process of figuring out where to go in there, if there's enough outdoor, you could fix some of these joints? Did you say that?
Just some concrete patching. This concrete patching is part of the project already.
Just in the area they're working on, or?
Just in the area they're working on, but there's also another spot directly adjacent to the numbers that isn't connected to the other patching that we said that should be included also. So if there is something just absolutely falling apart out there, keeping in mind the funding level and the local match grant, couldn't address everything out there.
So if we go through and we spend the $150,000 on fixing the rest of the cracks, ceiling, we got a pretty damn good runway, don't we?
So that would probably take concrete patching of $300,000 to $400,000. And then the ceiling of the joints would probably be another 80. Previously, we were told by the state that the joint ceiling couldn't be funded by them. It would be 100% local. I checked back with Shane again on that, and very well could be the same.
So that's the purpose of the joint ceiling, is it would be? Well, I know last fall, when I left on my hiatus, we had a plan together. We figured the ceiling would have to be at our cost. At least, I don't want to know what fell to you. What comes in is significant over here back in.
What was the question, Jerry? I couldn't quite?
I said, we had our plan laid out last year, committee did, before I even went south. And it seemed like the whole thing is kind of changing here, which I can expect a little bit, but the prices are coming in quite behind what the estimates.
No, it was 145 last year. For the second part of the?
How are you coming in at right now for your?
150.
You mean for the current project?
Current project.
Yeah, it is over.
Because I'm thinking that 150, you don't want to touch it. You feel that much over?
Well, this one was 130 is what we had applied for the grant. And with engineering and everything, it is 133, 245. By accepting that base bid, but we think we can cut about 10,000 with this first change order.
And just to address the going with an overlay instead of additional concrete patching only, the additional concrete patching, you're looking at having a $150,000 project every couple of years for the next, well, for the foreseeable future. In order to upkeep the runway, the concrete has deteriorated.
But we still got to fix all them before you lay it, right?
You'd have to fix quite a bit of the bad stuff, which is what the $150,000 would address. And then the overlay would be something that would last five, seven years.
So the overlay would reduce the cost of sealing the cracks?
If you looked at the overlay cost at 15%, I mean, I have an overlay here at a total project of 470,000, 15% of that is 70,000. That's the local match for sealing the joints, because it'd be 100%. So I guess when you're looking at fully funding the joint ceiling or funding an overlay, the cost is pretty similar. And that's how we arrived with discussing the $500,000 project. And I'm not here to recommend any of these need to happen right now, or next year, or anything like that. It all depends on local funding. Just trying to be a helpful resource and say what your options are for keeping it open out there and low use as much as it has been, even increase use.
Right.
When was the last time we stuck any major money into that runway? Anybody know when we've done any repairs? Is this just deterioration coming over years and years?
About 10 years ago, we did the joints, and Troy Chilbrock did the concrete and the joints. And they fixed that up. Previous to that, there was some crack sealing and stuff done by the state. But the runway was built, I think in the mid-'70s, was quite old and has held up quite well, except for the corners of the joints are starting to crumble.
So about a bigger aircraft.
Forty years. How thick is that base?
The concrete is seven inches. And I don't know what's underneath.
Okay. Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you. I don't think you're coming back anymore, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, number five on the agenda is the public hearing to approve the capital improvement plan. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any comments or questions? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to number six, the resolution adopting the capital improvement plan for years 2023 through 2, through 2027.
So moved, second. McConnell.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Kriener.
Yes.
Alright, next on the agenda, number seven is request from the Broken Road Grill and Bar to adjust the amortization schedule for repayment of the revolving loan. Come on up.
We're Governor Carol Lund, and we're just reluctant to see if we could possibly extend the loan. We are doing more work than we anticipated doing, and the supply chain is not helping. Supply chain issues.
What was the original schedule again that went out?
I had to pull it out. So?
Seven years? Yeah. Yeah. And I don't know if everybody saw their letter. And let me find it here, so what you're asking for then is a three-month reprieve? Is that what it is? Yeah. On paying the loan back.
And then what that would do is, we just want to accrue interest for those three months and then extend the maturity, three months.
I'll make that motion.
Hold a second.
Kriener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
And Carmen.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have a date picked out yet for any, hopefully can open, or not even close yet?
We're getting a lot closer. We're getting a lot closer.
Jason's good with a paintbrush, just keep that in mind.
We got a lot of the paint done already.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Yep. Next, number eight on the agenda is the motion to award hotel motel tax grants for tourism projects. And we had four of them. You want to go ahead?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. We had four of them. The first one was from the Cresco Theater and Opera House requesting $500. The committee recommended giving 500. The second was Family Fun Nights requesting $2,000. Committee recommended $1,750. The third is the Drift Runner Snowmobile Club, they requested $2,000. The committee recommended awarding $1,750. And the last fourth one, the Howard County Fair requested $4,000, and the committee recommended 3,500.
Since Amy and I are both on the committee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to make the motion.
No, they can't make the motions.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Alex and Rich?
The only thing I would question, the fair really brings in a lot of tourism.
So you're saying 4,000, the whole thing?
I would recommend giving them their full 4,000 and taking 500 out of our savings. But, I mean, it's totally up to you and the committee, you know, kind of talked about it, but.
An additional 250? You just said 500?
Yeah, it looks, they, the committee recommended 35, and they asked for 4,000.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I would not have a problem with the extra 500.
But it's up to you guys, but I just, when you look at all the people that come from outside of the area to the fair.
I'd make that motion, that we take the additional 500 out of our savings and bump that up to 4,000.
I second it.
Carmen.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kriener.
Yes.
And Fortune.
Yes.
Alright, number nine, the motion to declare a public purpose and approval of $15,000 payment to the Howard County Business and Tourism in accordance with the 28E agreement.
So moved.
So first you have to declare the public purpose for it? So perhaps Jason could recite his public purpose? Your mission statement, or your?
I sure didn't bring it.
I know, I had it.
Hopefully you got it. But basically, you know what we do. It's about economic development, it's about growing the community, it's about business development, it's about startups, it's about any assistance that we can give to you folks that you, that you need. So that's what we do each and every year, and that's what we do for every community in this county. So, and the county at large, too.
And that money comes out of the hotel motel one, or this is out of our?
Out of ours.
This is out of our general fund.
Yeah. And that goes, I mean, the chamber office is part of that, and?
Correct, so what we do is, like I said before, we take the Howard County Business and Tourism funds, and then we distribute that, that's kind of what we try to do to.
And it stays all right here in the county.
Correct, yeah.
Stays right here in Howard County.
Correct, stays right with our office. It's either going to the Chamber, going to Cresco Industrial Development Corporation, or it's going to Howard County Economic Development.
Okay.
You bet. I mean, this is what we kind of have done for the last decade or more. We haven't touched 15,000 as our number for our contribution from you guys to us. The county's our biggest supporter, just so you know. They're absolutely huge, so I will not give you that number. But without them, and without the banks, and without our cooperative and our other utilities, and you guys, that's what really keeps our lights on. We do vary it a little bit when we build our smaller communities, you know. A city like Proton of 250 doesn't quite pay $15,000. That'd be their entire budget, so, not quite, but you get my point. And we are looking, hopefully, I think we put in the budget for next year, doing our first increase since I've been here, and seeing if we can't bump that 15,000 to 20,000 next year. And that goes with some of the staffing increases that we're doing in our office right now, to hopefully catch up on that as we go forward.
Alright, I'll second Amy's motion. Fortune.
Yes.
Kriener.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
And Busca.
Yes.
Yes.
Number 10, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a pump maintenance service agreement with electric pump.
That's the one for 2,900?
Yep. And so that would be for a three-year. They discovered that they forgot to increase our price over the past 10 years, so we have not had a price increase. I think it was even more than that.
Thirteen, at least.
Thirteen years. So they're not going back to ask us to pay more because it was their mess-up, but, so we did take a 600 or 900, $600 jump this year, but that's because we should have been increasing before. But we've been very happy with their service.
Hesman?
Yeah. I make the motion.
Second. Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number 11, resolution approving the investment policy for the city of Cresco.
So this is just a policy that we need to review every five years. We have not changed it for as long as I've been here. Just basically follows the law that I can't invest in long-term or really risky investments.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Number 12, resolution approving the record retention policy for the city of Cresco.
And this is basically taken right from Iowa League of Cities based on what we have to keep, the number of years we have to keep public records.
So just checking, that said it was a 2012. They don't have an update to it?
That was a news run.
They're having a little trouble with their record retention. How are we going to get people to erase their cell phones? I mean, that's what one has to do under this policy, to erase calendars and, you know, any text messages they might have exchanged. We need a record retention policy, but I just don't understand how, I think your workload goes way, way up.
Well, I'm not going to address that, I guess. I don't.
Is this checking cell phones?
Well, I mean, it's because record retention with paper is easy, relatively easy. Record retention with electronics sucks. I mean, it's really, really hard. And I know because my electronics have been subpoenaed when I was working and you just have no idea what's in there unless at the end of the year, five years, you know, you go back and check that Nate erased his calendar from five years back. It's just awful. If you kept it on your private cellphone, if you kept it on your work computer and you just erased the file. And especially if you use Gmail, then it's really hard because you can't do it. I mean, I'm going to make a motion that we do it. I'm just saying, boy, this is going to be hard.
I mean, I just think we have to do the best we can and if we have more than we need.
Yeah.
I understand.
We'll try to clean it, but...
I had my phone, too, but it was not my phone, though. It was company phone, I mean.
But it's difficult. I have a hard time deleting because I go back to past emails all the time, so I have a really hard time deleting is my problem.
The trick, at least, with paper is you have to do a really good job of putting it in the box and then you never look at it again. You take the box and you dump it in the shredding.
With your destroy...
Because if you look at it, you're going to go, oh, boy, that would be really useful.
And we do that with a lot of our records. Once we know the destroy date, we have destroy dates on the boxes, then we just pull the whole box.
Who does our shredding?
I'm sorry?
Who does our shredding?
We take it out, Hawkeye Sanitation, and watch them do it.
How long do you have to retain those?
Well, that's what the last...
There's 30 pages.
Twelve pages of this.
Depends on what you, some of it is permanent that I can't destroy.
Permanent retention of all the contract files?
No. Oh, no, no, no. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Basically, the electronics follows the paper. Whatever the paper retention is, is when you're supposed to destroy the, it's just that it's so much harder.
So it's a subject matter, not how it's...
To destroy because you've got one email that is under permanent retention and the next email is, you know, three-year retention. It's just really hard. But I'll make the motion to approve that. It's a good policy.
Okay. Second.
And I have to say, we've been following it, it's just making it official.
Okay.
McConnell? Krieger?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number 13, resolution setting charges for services to private parties.
And this is just for charges that we have to do? We haven't updated it since 2013, so we thought it was time to increase a few of the prices.
And how often does it happen where we have to charge somebody?
It doesn't, but we want to get, we like to keep it above where a local contractor's going to be, so that way it doesn't happen.
All right.
So moved.
Second is...
Is that Gary?
Yep. He's talking Gary, yeah.
Carmen?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
And Fortune?
Yes.
Number 14, discuss proposed pickleball project and possible motion to approve plans and solicit quotes.
So fresh off the printer, as I was walking over here. So because this project is over $57,000 and under $139,000, we fall into what's called competitive quotes. So basically, you still need to have your plans and specs drawn up, but instead of going through all of the official bidding process, we can just go out for quotes, which means you can just contact three, at least three contractors and try to get quotes for it. And then it's not quite as stringent on all of the requirements. So in front of you is WHKS has drawn up the specs and plans for it. And what I would like to do, they're still kind of finalizing them, but what I'd like to do is tonight we approve this so that as soon as we get all the final touches on it, we are ready to go out for the quotes so that we can get those sent out.
So you see, there's two different ones here.
Yeah, there's two pages, so...
Okay. So this one is the new...
Correct.
The new one that was brought for quotes. Do you have that down there?
It may be the other one.
Okay.
I think the one that you're holding is the original.
Is that existing maybe?
Yeah. But it's a safe footprint, just...
I think they're going to have to widen it a little bit.
So they have to go 10 feet farther north.
Yeah, there's a tree there.
So we'd be able to use three, yeah, we're going to probably have to remove one tree that's on the corner of the driveway. And then a line will probably have to move their line because once we extend 10 feet, then...
They have poles in the way.
The line's going to go right over our court. So we've already contacted them. And then we've contacted Bob's Electric about lighting, but we're going to keep all that out of the project. So when we go out for our quotes, all we're doing is just the fencing, the nets, the painting, and the new asphalt on the courts.
And the plan is to keep a tennis court still?
So yes, the tennis court will be on the east side.
Right.
And we're going to, we're trying to look at multi-use of that, possibly some basketball hoops and stuff like that to try to make sure it gets used, but maybe four regulation-sized pickleball courts.
What does HMA mean?
Hot...
Hot Mix Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
Hot Mix Asphalt.
Yeah. Yep. We haven't got any quotes on any of that yet. We're just in this stage.
Right.
Correct.
So right now you would be allowing us to go out for the quotes.
Yeah.
Where are we in fundraising? The group was fundraising?
And so we still haven't heard back from that Walmart. And Brandon was working on an Alliant and on Black Hills grant applications. And then he's already got, I think I sent you the sample, kind of like the thermometer that Bill did for the East Park Leechers. Brandon's got that pretty well all ready to put onto the website once we move forward, but we don't want to start fundraising until we make sure it's going forward to, sometimes people write us checks and then, so...
So basically, then tonight, we can decide to solicit the quotes or not is what we're looking to do, so...
Yeah, I made the motion to get the quotes.
Second.
All right. Amy, second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then item 15 on the agenda is a clarification for the garbage and the recycling procedures. And I'm just going to give a rundown before we start of how everything's fallen into place. And this was all initiated by Hawkeye Sanitation. They came to us September 8th, 2021 with their potential plant. And I believe it was at that meeting or one soon after, they had an actual container here. The 15th, Marcy did add it in the newspaper. The 20th, at our council meeting, we had a discussion on it. November 11th, we set the public hearing. And then we had the three readings of the public hearing, November 15th of '21, December 6th of '21, and it passed on the third reading, 12/20 of 2021. So this was, like I said, something that was initiated by Hawkeye Sanitation. Their plan is to give each homeowner two containers, one to commingle all the recycling in and one for the garbage. And then they will have, they have to buy a whole new truck as well, or two, because the truck, as my understanding, will pick the can up and dump it and set it back down. I mean, we have no control over it. We don't mark the garbage bills up. We don't get anything for it. So I mean, it's just something they've chosen to do. So I don't know if that answers the questions you had or, okay. All right. What are your questions? Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I read down to pickleball and I totally missed the last one.
That's all right.
Like I said, I, my name is Gina Bentley. I live on 713 Fort Avenue East. Like I said, I never received a message in my building about this. I know when I talked to City Hall, they had said that the, it was in the paper and it was on the website and I got that about that. And it's not like I'm trying to change it or anything like that. I just, I had people, I was mentioning it to people and they kept asking me questions. I'm like, I don't know. And so I called the City Hall and they didn't have a lot of answers. So I called Hawkeye. They didn't have a lot of answers. She told me I could call back, talk to a Lucas. I don't know who that is.
Yeah, that's one of the family that owns it. Yeah.
Could not get a hold of him. Every time I called, he was busy doing something. So when I had talked to Hawkeye in the first place, they had said, why don't you talk to City Hall? So here I am. I guess one of the questions was, why did they want to change it?
I think some of it was labor.
A lot of it's labor and they had to buy a new truck. And so they wanted a truck because they're doing this in other towns as well.
Okay. What other towns are they doing it in?
I don't know. Kater, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I think they already are doing it in Kater. I think so. Chester, too. Could be.
Okay, just Decore do it.
That's a different company.
Yeah. That's a different company.
I would assume they didn't want to do this, but I don't know if they had a choice because it's expensive for them.
Okay, I just know that there's like three people in Decore that have their garbage picked up.
Right. Yeah, Decore does a little different. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the other reason they gave, if I recall the discussions correctly, was people are putting stuff out in way more than they're entitled to. They have no way to recover it. The dogs or the crows, in my case, get into the bags and spread it all around. And so they're getting blamed for stuff that really people should be not doing.
Right.
And they're getting so much extra that then they're having to take an extra trip to the landfill and they're being penalized because they're limited to how much they can weigh and stuff, so...
They really want to increase recycling because our typical fees at the landfill, the cost for them to take a truck to the landfill, if that landfill, which we have to use, it's legal, is one of the highest in Iowa or was five years ago when I moved. Yeah. So they really want people to use recycling and this is one way to use recycling.
Also, our rates towards Sheik County landfill went up. In the last five, six years, we've never, they have never charged us for increases till now.
Okay. Can somebody bow out of the program and go with a different company then or not?
No.
Okay. What's going to be done with all the garbage cans and the recycled totes that we have now?
I believe they said they are going to have a day when we can bring all our garbage cans to them if we want. The recycled totes, do the homeowners own those or is the city homeowner does?
The homeowner does. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So whatever you want to do with them.
Okay. I just know as far as recycling them, you can't. It's not the...
I know they said they were going to have a day for everybody to bring their old containers in.
Right. It's not the right plastic as far as I'm aware that they recycle here, so...
Okay. Yeah, I don't know that answer, I guess.
But I think the council asked them and they said they would...
Yeah.
Do something with them?
Something to collect them.
And the recycling is still going to be available down there.
Yes.
It currently has seven days a week for bringing their stuff in.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I recycle all the time.
Yep.
So I mean, I don't, it's just, that's why I asked them both and the city and their, what are we doing with the current garbage cans? And some people I talked to were upset because they have spent up to $50, $75 for a garbage can and they wanted to know if they were getting refunded for it. And I said, I don't think so. But just wanted to clarify that one. No.
That would be up to Hawkeye Sanitation.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we, the city, they charge us X amount per home and that's what's on your bill. I mean, we're just kind of a pass-through on it, you know, so...
Right. What's going to happen when the garbage can gets broke by the garbage man? Don't know.
No, I think that, I think...
No, they will repair it if it's normal, wearing tear or if they were to damage it. If, it's obvious that a homeowner did it, like started it on fire...
Right.
Or backed over it, then the homeowner would have to pay for a replacement.
It's just right now, it's just right now with the garbage cans that we do have, the system we do have, if they, they damage them, they don't take account for them anyway, so.
Right.
Well, that's why these will be automatic.
These are heavy-duty. They're pretty heavy-duty.
Right, right.
I mean, they have a machine that picks it up on the truck and dumps it.
Right. And the next question is, if you have more than that, they're talking about the, I know, because I read through the ordinance and stuff about having the disposable bag. Do you put your garbage in a garbage bag and then put it in the disposable bag? Is that how it works?
You can do, yeah, I think you could, as long as you buy their bag.
And where do we buy these bags?
I'm, I'm not sure yet.
I don't know where they're gonna have them all, but.
The question's different. You just take your normal garbage bag that you got in your container in the house, throw that in that dump, in that big tote.
Right, but when that's full.
Then you gotta buy a bag from them.
You buy a bag. Now, with that new bag that you buy, is that where the garbage bag goes? Or can we just throw it in the bag?
I would assume either one, but I haven't seen the bags, so.
I think the bags are heavy-duty garbage bags, so you would need to bag it inside that bag, I would not think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see.
They're gonna be a specific color too, aren't they? Different marking and.
Yep.
What happens when something doesn't fit inside either bag?
That'd be a question for them. I don't know.
Okay, they don't know.
They don't know either?
No.
Yes, we talked to Russ on Friday.
You did?
They are training their employees, so if you call now, you should get better answers.
I should get better answers? Okay, one of the people I talked to was an employee, and he said they had a meeting and didn't really know much more, so I wasn't sure. So with these extra bags, I guess my big thing was, you put out the extra bags, they're not going in the one where the garbage can goes, the initial one.
Correct.
I asked, they said they would be sending around another garbage truck with that, with throwers, for the extra bags. How is that any different than?
That would be up to them. I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think they're, the truck they're buying, it's dumping the container, wouldn't have throwers on it, so it'd be.
They said they might have a thrower on it.
That's up to them.
Yeah.
No, that's up to them. I understand that.
And they're back.
Part of it was the labor, the labor and the less wear and tear on the throwers, and I understand all that. But then you put out an extra bag, and they have to send around a garbage can, a garbage truck with throwers to put that in there.
I guess my question would be, is there an additional cost for that extra bag?
Yeah, you buy it.
You have to buy the bag, but.
That's, the cost is built into that bag.
Okay, it is.
The question.
That's a question they can answer. We can't, I'm sorry.
Well, I will try them, and who should I talk to this time?
Lucas is the key person you're supposed to talk to.
Yeah, but I mean, I think their door is open during normal business hours, so you could probably go out there too, here out by the airport.
Yeah, I know where they are.
Yeah.
What about small construction? I did, I, I mean, there was a thing in the ordinance about construction.
Hawkeye, you need to talk to Hawkeye.
Okay, 'cause it was under collection vehicles, okay. Okay, what is this one with about getting an extra can? In the ordinance?
You're getting a recyclable one end of garbage can.
Right. And they each have a thing.
Well, they'll be a different, one'll be recycling, usually a blue right here.
But they'll be have different color of it.
But when it comes to like a house construction, and you're not doing like a big project, like somebody put their, put through a wall or something, and you gotta do that. And that construction.
We need to contact Hawkeye Sanitation, just like you would do now.
Okay, and as far as furniture, what do we?
Them too.
Talk to them?
They'll pick it up, yeah.
And weight limits? Because we have weight limits right now that some people don't follow.
You mean on the streets?
No, on the garbage.
On the garbage that you put in.
As long as it fits in the thing.
Yeah, it's gonna fit in the container.
It just has to fit in the container.
Bigger.
Then you have to talk to them, and they give you a special.
When you put stuff out, additional garbage like that, construction stuff, old stools.
Furniture.
Furniture. They bill you separately.
Yeah.
They will send you, when they come by and they pick that, and I'm gonna use a stool, for example. They pick it up and they throw it in the back of the truck. I know a year ago, they charged five bucks extra for that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would assume this is all gonna be handled the same.
So that would go back to the truck with the throwers, then?
Who knows? Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, I'm sure that.
Yeah, I would assume so. I mean, it's their business. They're gonna do it how they want.
Right, I understand that. It's just, there's a lot of questions and.
It's not been laid out real well on their part, so.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what I'm getting to. It's just.
And it's new to them, I mean, too, so I mean, they're gonna learn as they go. But, I mean, a lot of bigger cities, Michelle, you said we had some calls in here from people that moved here from bigger cities, and they were glad to see this coming.
They were mad that it took this long to get.
They said it was. I talked to one businessman, and he said, yeah, it's gonna be great. And then I mentioned the thing about the extra truck going around with throwers.
I don't think you have to worry about that. Just put your garbage out.
That's what we're getting rid of. That's why we're doing the automatic things, we don't have the throwers.
Yeah, that's, that's their, that's how they wanna do it, I guess.
So 90% of them can do that and eliminate the thrower, so.
Right.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Right. 'Cause the furniture and everything, like I said, we go back to the throwers and stuff. So. And how much do you know if they're charging for extra?
Don't know.
And how many of these extra bags can you put out?
I think as many as you want, but I don't know. That's up to them. Yeah, I mean, it's their, it's their program, you know, we're a customer.
No, I understand that. And when I called, it was like, no, ask the city council.
Oh.
They will not say that anymore.
Okay, good.
So if you get that answer again, I wanna hear it because they are not supposed to be telling that.
Right.
Because these are all Hawkeye Sanitation garbage collection issues.
And they're good people. It's just, like I said, maybe they're just, you know, they'll, they'll get it figured out, and it'll work. I mean, not worried about that, but.
Okay. Then my, my biggest one, I guess, was when I called City Hall, and went to City Hall, and they said, well, we can't send out a notice about everything being discussed at the city council. And I said, I understand that, but when it is, means that my bill's going up a little bit. I'd like to know about it.
And we discussed it one, two, three, four, five, six, seven times.
Right.
Yeah.
With an article in the paper.
With an article in the paper.
Yeah.
But as far as this goes, once the 65-gallon carts are all furnished and everything, the bill is going up.
Yeah.
The rates are going up for the tipping fees that, that be initiated by Oneishik County landfill.
Yeah, and then, yeah, that, that's part of it too, I believe, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's their rates. It's not ours.
No, no, I, okay, but I guess my point is, when something's going up that it's up there, as far as price, that's affecting the whole town, is there a way we can put that notice in? Like the water bill? Like, like this would be for the water bill, you know?
I mean, we do have a spot in the water bill we can add comments to, or not, just to roll?
It's too short. You can't.
Yeah.
So then we have to do additional stuffing, and that takes additional time, and a lot of, it costs a lot of money to stuff 1900.
Well, no, I understand that, but like when it comes down to the town folks are paying more money for something that's gonna be discussed.
Yeah, I mean.
That's why we have public hearings and.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah.
We have two public hearings on us.
It was kinda during, where we were having, you know, COVID and stuff like that, and I was constantly being, staying at home because somebody had it that I do. You know, so it's not getting out. But the people I talked to, and I had talked to quite a few, that said, you know, they were not even aware of it. They don't look on the website, you know, I know it's in the paper, but is it possible that when it comes to something that's gonna cost the city people more, that we could put something in the water or garbage bill? It's not like it's all the time.
But virtually everything we do costs some, you know, costs you money through your taxes somehow. How do we distinguish between, I mean, because we raise the water and sewer rates, and you haven't said anything about that, we do that every year.
Right.
How much, and, and in fact, putting that in the envelope and mailing it out costs money.
Right.
So I guess my position is, we publish it in the paper and on the website. People have to take some responsibility to read that. If, if people don't have, have, you know, you can go to the library and get on the internet. It's posted. How are we supposed to distinguish between what costs? I mean, we know, because everything we do costs people money.
Right, and like you said, the water rates go up every year.
Right, which you haven't mentioned.
No, I haven't mentioned because they go up every year.
So does this, garbage goes up January 1st every single year?
Right, and I saw that it goes up on January 1st, and then it goes up an additional amount once we get these containers.
This is a one-time deal, yes.
Right, but it's an additional amount. Do you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's one, one amount, and then, oh, we're getting another amount.
That's when you get the totes.
Yeah, that's when you get the totes, and that's the only time we're getting it. But I just have, I have people comment to me on different things, so I needed to bring them up to you.
That's why we chose to send this letter out now, which Hawkeye Sanitation told us they wish we would not have.
Well, it's 'cause they didn't have the answers.
I felt you, everybody needed to know ahead of time, rather than have their totes.
I never got one.
There should be copies.
And that was in the water bill?
It should have been in the water.
It should have been in the water bill, yeah. 'Cause like I said, when I first found out, it was my niece and her husband showed up.
I was gonna say, we stuffed them, believe me.
Yeah, I got it by email.
I know it was in the paper, 'cause I see that. The sanitation totes was on the paper. You get to Times Play Dealer?
No, I don't. I don't get to shop for half the time.
Do you follow, do you follow council?
They're also on the Media Sound Channel, and I'm too.
No, and I, I'm aware of all this.
Yeah.
Because I've come up here before and done things before, and, but I just had a lot of people complaining to me about it, so I just wanted to be aware. And that now we call and talk to Lucas, and he should have the answer.
And, and Ross is their father, and I don't know who works in the office. Crystal is one of the gals in the office. I don't know who else works in there, but.
I talked to a lady.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.